It is time, I'm calling the January 12th, 2020, 21 Planning Commission to order. Please call the roll.
Bruno?
Here.
Gillum?
There.
Knight?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Middleton?
Here.
You've all received a copy of the minutes of the December 8th meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to make? If not, can I get a motion in a second?
No move.
Second.
Second.
Call your name when you make a motion or a second tonight.
Gillum. Second.
Steve.
Bruno first.
Bruno?
Okay, we have a...
Aye.
Gillum?
Here.
Knight?
Aye.
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye. You've received a copy of the December 11th special call meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or additions?
We accept them. Chairman Knight, Knight moves if we accept them as read.
Second. Steve.
Have a motion and a second, call the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye. I kind of apologize for having to call this Zoom meeting at late notice, but given what's been happening around the state the last couple of weeks, I thought it prudent to be very cautious and careful about how we meet for at least the time being. Because we're on Zoom, I would appreciate it if you want to make a statement or a comment or speak. If you raise your hand, Candy, you raise your hand for Lucian. And so that the chair can recognize you. Are there... There's one other item that we want to put on the agenda, and that is a discussion about a proposed park donation. We'll put that under new business. Are there any other items to put on the agenda?
Mr. Middleton?
Getting the agenda set. The first item of business is, this is election night. My election for chairman of the commission, our floor is open for nominations.
Bob Milton, Steve.
Second for Bob Milton, Danny Knight.
Are there any other nominations? And the nominations are called. We have a motion and a second nomination. Call the roll.
Bruno? Bruno?
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Upstaying. We now have the election of a vice chairman. Do I have any nominations?
Blake, Martin, Steve.
Is there a second?
Second, Knight for Martin.
Are there any other nominations? I'll call the nominations closed. Please take a roll call and vote.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye. Excellent. Okay, call item number eight, please.
Preliminary plat for lot one Tropical Smoothie, also known as 1510 Country Club Craft and Toll Agent.
Richard?
Yes, sir. We have a new business that's coming in to Sherwood. It's in the Wildwood area, not too far from the Dairy Queen, to the west of Pediatrics Plus, across the street from Delta Dental. So if that's enough reference points for you, you should be able to visualize where this is. The lot is shown on the screen here. We've reviewed everything. We've had good response from our engineer of record, Brad Peterson with Craft and Toll. I believe everything is in order on this preliminary plat and would recommend it for approval.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Is this the Dairy Queen?
No.
It's near the Dairy Queen. This is for a Tropical Smoothie establishment.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Blake?
We have a motion, is there a second, to approve the plat?
Second.
Steve. Second, Knight.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All the rolls to approve the plat.
Bruno?
Steve.
Bruno?
I said aye. Can you not...
Can you...
It's very faint. Bruno?
So we got Bruno, Gillum.
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Site plan for 1510 Country Club Craft and Toll Agent.
Do you have any further comments, Richard?
Yes, would like to look at this for just a moment. Very pleased with the, again, with the engineer responding to some of the requests that we made. And I want to just mention these because this is something that we do watch. This, in your packet, what you see is the north, the upper right-hand corner where the cursor was there, yeah, the dumpster location, that has been moved down to where the cursor is now. And we have that document submitted to our office. So we know that that is a better location. It moves it away from the single-family dwelling, which is bordering this property. We discussed the ingress egress drive and the need in the future for this lot that is where the cursor is located. There's another lot back there that could be developed. And this ingress egress easement provides access to that lot. Number one, to make it a legal lot, but also for, you know, the purposes of development. And we have 26 feet of pavement available for an aerial apparatus of the, from the fire department for them to get in there. So these are the things we reviewed. And again, we've had, you know, everything's been answered. The setbacks, 30-foot landscape plans, of course, will come in when they provide the drawings for their building permit. The lighting, we discussed that. To remind them that none of the lighting, exterior lighting can illuminate beyond the property line. And I believe that's, that's all, Mr. Middleton.
Okay, this is a site plan and it requires a public hearing. Did anybody submit written comments with respect to this site plan? Candy?
No.
Is there anybody online who wishes to address this? Hearing none. I'll call the public hearing closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I think it looks pretty good. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Andrew.
Bruno?
We have a...
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Old business, amend the zoning code regarding site distance triangle.
We discussed this briefly at the last meeting. But Richard, do you want to fill us in on developments since then?
Yes, sir. As far as the diagrams are concerned, we have an alternative set of diagrams for you. And the only thing that's really different is the addition of graphics that show the property lines for interior lots. Okay, Dennis has this, the top one, the very first one, the street spot triangle diagram, shows the intersection of two streets. And it's, it has a clear sight triangle that illustrates how you measure 25 feet from back of curb in each direction. And then within that triangle area, we need clear sight, which means nothing taller than two feet or lower than 10. I believe that's the limits that are, that are there for to accommodate drivers when they get to the intersection, that they can safely, you know, move through that intersection. Now, the site triangle, because its application helps us with, you know, being able to see, especially when you're operating a vehicle. The question was, can we extend this and use it for driveways? And we believe that we can. The rule would be regarding streets, that we apply this in every situation where there's a request for a fence in the front yard or some landscaping or any violation, I mean, any situations that we observe where we cannot, you know, someone, we receive a complaint or something like that where we can't see. And we'll use this diagram as the rule in order to make a decision on what has to be removed. When we get to driveways, we'll use these diagrams as a guide. And there's a reason to say it that way. If someone is in an existing neighborhood and, you know, it's built out and individual comes with a request for, say, a fence in the front yard, and we would use this diagram to analyze the clear sight triangle for the purpose of either the owner of the property or the neighbor to be able to see whenever they're in their driveway and trying to back out into traffic. And we would approve or disapprove a request based on this triangle and would be using it as a guide in the consideration of that approval. If someone has installed something and they've lived there 20 years and along comes someone to develop the next, the lot next door, in that situation, we would expect the person who's building to use the site triangle diagram to help them locate their driveway so that they are not creating their own problem. But we would not be, I don't anticipate using the diagram to require the person that's been there 20 years to remove something that might block a driveway that was placed too close to the property line. And these site triangle diagrams, you know, we have a property line shown, so that kind of gives you an idea of what we're talking about. The site triangle can extend from one person's yard into another person's yard. That's a reason to use this as a guide so that we can explain it to folks and we can hopefully just have dialogue and not ever have any, you know, real situations. I believe this would help answer a problem we had some time back where there was a privacy fence extending out that was blocking someone's driveway. And of course, the fence came later. So in that case, when the fence comes later, that's something where we need to use the illustration as a guide for approving the fence or disapproving the fence. Do you have, does anyone have any comments to make? Or have I explained this sufficiently?
Anybody have questions?
Did I see another diagram below that one? You got another one, Ricky? Oh, okay. That's the same one that's in the packet then.
Right, it's for the circle drive and, and that one's thrown in just, it would, you know, we would, we would apply this one, you know, just imagine there's a property line next door. We would apply it the same way. But I think the property line in the, in the middle diagram, since it's shown, that brings it to light. It brings the property line into the discussion and actually shows that we are considering the fact that the triangle extends into the neighbor's property in some situations.
Yes, sir. Okay.
The whole point of this is to create a mechanism to ensure that nobody puts something up that obstructs the vision to the property next door. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you have no questions or concerns, we can put this on next month's agenda for a public hearing. Because this would be amending the zoning code.
Put it on next month's agenda for the public hearing.
Yep, agreed.
Bruno?
Is that a second?
Yes.
Bruno?
Aye.
Gillum?
Aye.
Knight?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Middleton?
Aye.
Home occupations.
Okay, you'll recall that at the last commission meeting, that's all special, but it's the regular one, we adopted a recommendation to send a revision to the zoning code about home occupations to the city council. I pulled that before it actually got placed on the council's agenda. And I did so at the request of the city clerk because there were some concerns about one section of the draft regulation that conflicted a bit with existing home occupation tax requirements in the clerk's office. And so we either are going to delete this on the grounds that we don't need to be speaking about tax or occupation license issues in the zoning code. That's really up to the city clerk's office. But at least for the moment, we're suspending it until conversations between the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city engineer can take place about what they want to do, either with these requirements or changing the home occupation tax issue because it's outdated. Mr. Cobb, do you have any further comments on that? See here? You're muted, Steve. You're still muted.
Okay, how about that?
Yeah, that's better.
Technically challenged, to say the least. I have talked to Angela and she knows we need to visit about this, but I suspect that her office is overwhelmed right now. I think there are at least two people out ill and maybe more. And so I think it would be best if we just let this go to next month. And by that time, I think we can have a conversation about this section, this language, if we can get this wrapped up.
Thank you. What's on your screen right now is the section in question. And that's whether we should put anything about permits and criteria for a permit into the zoning code, but rather let that be taken care of elsewhere. So we'll just simply wait a month before we decide to take any action. If we're asked to delete this section, that's probably what we'd be looking at. Otherwise, there might be some changes. But until those folks have gotten together, we just don't know. Any questions? We can move along.
New business, additional qualifications for PUD application.
Richard?
Yes, so this is a discussion item. We have a developer who shared with us a plan unit development that he would like to build in Sherwood. And
That's not...
Yeah, this is a, this is a different graphic here. That's not the, I don't, I don't know if you have anything actually on this PUD discussion. We can just leave it there for now on the screen. That'll be fine. I don't think there is anything to post on the screen. It'll just be a discussion. The developer came to us with a site plan and with a mixed-use development. And it's part commercial, part residential. And in order to accept the PUD application in our current zoning code, it either has to conform to the current zoning of the property, which it does not, or be consistent with the general character of the land use classification for that property on the city's land use plan, and it does not, or be substantially similar and compatible with adjacent properties. And the key word there being adjacent. And in reviewing it, it, again, it does not conform to that. So there was, there was no way to accept it based on those criteria. If we expanded the adjacent property consideration to be maybe a quarter mile, then we get into a situation where, yes, there are many other land uses, zonings, and businesses that would support the PUD application. In many hours of discussions with the developer, with his professional architect, Mr. Middleton, myself, several others, we think that the, the best thing at this point is to go back and review our qualifications for submittal. And I'll take a little sidebar here and introduce Mr. Jim Von Tonglen. Jim is, in some circles, very well-known in the state of Arkansas. He writes a column monthly for the City and Town Magazine, which is published by the Arkansas Municipal League. He's available to consult with any of the cities and towns in the state of Arkansas through the municipal league. I met him in 2002 or 2003, not stamped with another city as a city engineer. And we've known each other since then, and I've come to appreciate him and respect him highly. He is now on contract with us in the engineering and planning department to help us review our zoning code and update it and bring it in line with Vision 2040, the comprehensive plan, and also bring in line the master street plan, the land use. And then we'll get into our subdivision regulations. So there's a lot of things where, I mentioned earlier today to someone, we want to just comb the knots out of this so that everything is parallel and smooth and agreeing across all of these different documents. So we're happy to have him available. And he has submitted a paragraph here, and it's some alternative wording. And this is just a, this is not finalized, but this is something that I'd like to offer for consideration that we could think about. Again, the current wording in the zoning code is that it either, a plan unit development either agrees with the existing zoning district, consistent with a land use classification, or substantially similar with, to, and compatible with adjacent properties. Here's the new alternative wording. A PUD shall meet at least one of the following threshold requirements. Conform to the permitted uses within the existing zoning district that the PUD has proposed. Be consistent with the general character of the land use classification in the subject property, of the subject property in the city's land use plan. Be substantially similar to and compatible with adjacent property. So there, the first three are the same as they are today. And here's a new one, the fourth one. Or permit the development of an infill property that because of existing limitations could not be developed under the provisions of any existing zoning district in a manner that would be physically possible or reasonably profitable and remain in conformance with policies or provision of the city's adopted plans. Further, implementation of a plan unit development applies only to the provisions of the zoning and subdivision codes. Does not imply approval of developments that violate any other municipal laws or those of the state and federal governments. So the essence of this fourth consideration is that if there is a piece of property that is surrounded by developments and that property needs to be developed. It's a, it's a very good piece of property, but it's not quite needing any of these first three. That because it's, that's current description might be a unicorn. Because of its uniqueness, that we would permit the development of an infill property because of the existing limitations could not be developed under any other provisions. In other words, there's hardly anything else we could do with it. And this plan unit development proposal brings something that can be compatible with that area, and it could work. So we need to find a way to help development in the city and maintain the control over development that we currently have. We're not trying to open things up so that we lose control by any means. But we're wanting to be able to consider an application, accept an application on a basis where we can go into the discussion then and get into the details and actually prove through the approval process and the public hearings and going for getting your approval and having that recommended then as a zoning change to the city council, that by going through all of that effort, that we would protect the city, but at the same time, we would bring something to the city that is very helpful. Not getting into the details of this specific location or exactly what's being proposed, what we need to do is consider this fourth option so that anywhere in the city of Sherwood, where this situation exists, we would be able to accept a PUD application.
The discussion that we had at the last commission meeting was that we had some real reservations about changing the land use plan to commercial that would support a safe, well, and that maybe that what we needed was a change in the land use plan that allowed for transitional uses or mixed uses that a PUD could latch to. I think our sense at the time was that probably would be a little complicated and we'd need to think about where other places in the city where that might be appropriate. That started to seem to get to be swarming on us. So Mr. Von Tonglen threw out an option for a simple amendment to the zoning code to allow one other opportunity for us to consider a planned unit development. And the point he was making, and I shouldn't speak for him since he's listening to me, is that what we don't have in our current zoning is a very good way to take care of infill development. That is development for properties that aren't greenfield. And this would do that. So you're basically looking at two options in the short term, whether to just change the land use plan or just make a simple revision to the zoning code to allow a development likes being proposed to even apply. So at this point, is there any sense on the part of you commissioners? Don't all speak at once. Blake?
It sounded like a good concept to me.
Steve?
I agree with Blake.
Lucian?
Hi.
Danny?
I don't have any, I don't have any problems with it. It's still got to be approved. I mean, this is just opening up an avenue very easily here. I'm certainly on board with that.
Well, then I would suggest that we schedule a public hearing next month to consider a change in the zoning code to allow this revision.
Is that agreeable?
He is with me. Danny?
Yeah, me.
Mr. Middleton, at that time, would we want to get Mr. Cobb to weigh in then? It might be too soon for any legal advice at this point. I'm not
I, I think he should weigh in with language before we actually put it on the agenda next month.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll share this with him then.
Uh, cause my sense of this, and I'm speaking for the commission, feel free to, to chime in if you disagree, is that conceptually you like the idea.
Yes.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Moving on.
Hemp Hill Road project discussion.
Here's another difficult situation, but I think uh, again, with Mr. Von Tonglen's help, he's I'll, I'll have another sidebar here. I tend to go down a rabbit hole and get very detailed and get very uh, myopic with the look sometimes. And then I, when I back off from it, it takes me a while to to put it down and come back and look at it again. And Mr. Middleton and I discussed that this afternoon that that seems to way, be the way we've been doing things. And along comes Mr. Von Tonglen again, and and Jim has this fresh look and certainly the experience to go with it. So I'll be using some of his ideas as I speak. The Hemp Hill project is a road improvement project, which is part of the 2018 sales tax improvements that were approved in June of 2018. The bond money of 22 and a half million dollars bonded in November of 2018. Uh, the clock is ticking on that and I've got to get some projects moving, which places urgency. The Hemp Hill residents are aware of the 50-foot existing right-of-way on Hemp Hill Road. They're aware that we were going to ask for additional right-of-way. And they've made their comments. And we've had one Zoom meeting, which was it was informational. It, I think it, that we accomplished what we wanted to accomplish from the information side. We did not accomplish what the neighbors were hoping, which was their opportunity to individually speak. And we're hoping to have another Zoom meeting probably next week and be able to afford them that opportunity. In the meantime, we've received written comments. And again,
Can you hear and say?
My desire for people to please submit your comment. We need those written comments from the residents of Hemp Hill. Now, if there's a 50-foot right-of-way existing. Hemp Hill is shown as a collector on the master street plan. A standard design for a collector requires a 60-foot right-of-way. We will not be able to get 60 feet because we, we would be in conflict with, with structures in some cases. So that's something early that Crafton Toll had identified. So we backed up and said, okay, what can we do? What can we get in the given space within 50 feet? What can we build that will address the classification of a, of a collector, which is more traffic than a, than a local street? But it's not connecting two jurisdictions. It's all within one city jurisdiction. And if we look at what we've done in years past on Woodruff, there's an ordinance that amends the master street plan and the subdivision regulations for a specific cross-section design for Woodruff. Same thing happened with East Maryland years ago. There's an ordinance that established the design, the, the width of the lanes, number of lanes, the bike lanes, sidewalks, and the presence of traffic circles or full roundabout. So if we go down that same path and have another special design just for Hemp Hill, we'll be adding special on special on special because we're going to wind up looking at Country Club the same way. And the key here is to distinguish between existing neighborhoods, which, when we change the road, we're doing a re, redevelopment action as opposed to greenfield. And greenfield is just, you know, wide open uh, land where we can actually apply the zoning and the street requirements and subdivision requirements uh, as, as we intended to their, to their fullest, so that we get the full right-of-way and we get the full benefit of the design. After talking with Rob and, and then considering Mr. Von Tonglen's advice, the question is, do we want to make a change to our subdivision regulations to add an option for the city engineer to be able to adjust the design of a cross-section that's either local or collector? And probably it's for discussion, but probably go ahead and include the minor arterials. But in those cases where we have road improvements that need to be made, but were restricted on the room that we have to make that without getting really dramatic with, with purchasing properties or uh, getting very dramatic with it, just allow the city engineer to make those adjustments as required. Seems like probably the shortest route to an end here to be able to address a special design for Hemp Hill, a special design for Country Club, and not be violating the requirements of the subdivision regulations. I'll ask Rob to help me at this point. Point out something. Have I said it properly?
Yes. We have a couple of options on how to deal with this, but the bottom line is that it's time sensitive. This is bond money and the project needs to go forward. And I want to compliment Richard on being extremely mindful of the opinions and desires of the residents of that area. That being said, we've got to figure out, right now, it would be difficult to design something that complies with our current cross-sections. But what's been happening that I don't think is a good idea is to keep creating unique cross-sections for specific streets. Ultimately, what we need to get is a typical cross-section or design standards that are appropriate for built-up areas which are different from new subdivisions. And I, I would like to ask Jim to comment on it because in his experience, he's familiar with some subdivision regulations that gives the city engineer the option to come up with design alternatives in those built-up areas. Could you comment, Jim?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Middleton. I, in my experience, I've, I've learned to try to shy away from ad hoc provisions. In other words, every time you have a problem, come up with a new set of regulations, a new set of standards, and a new set of cross-sections in this, this case. And as you might have noticed from tonight, I, I kind of tend toward the simple. My wife says this because I'm simple-minded, but I, I like to try to be as simple and find the easiest solution. And I, I know of instances, Mr. Middleton used to run a, a grant program. I suffered through some of his restrictions and lack of money to carry out these grandiose projects. So we had to learn to adjust the design to, to meet the budget. And that's why I've suggested maybe a simple addition to subdivision regulations. It's not already there that in the, in the street section, section, cross-section, section of the, of the subdivision regs. Just make a statement that in built-up areas and areas where there's not enough right-of-way or physical conditions are limiting that the city engineer can present uh, an acceptable alternative to the planning commission for consideration.
Mr. Cobb, do you see any red flags?
I think not. But we, I, I, I think if I understand Richard right now, he's somewhat hamstrung uh, on something that he needs to get moving. And I think Mr. Van Tonglen, I, I agree with him that I, I think that would be a reasonable approach and would help not just this project, but, but a couple of others that we're working on as well.
And I think from the timing standpoint, we've got the opportunity, we're discussing it tonight. We can make it a item of business for the February Planning Commission meeting. And whatever public hearing is required, we've got time to announce that. And then the planning commission would have the opportunity to make a recommendation to the council. And then the council can adopt that in the February council meeting. At the same time, I'll be moving ahead with whatever's the best design we can come up with. We still have some public input that we're, the Hemp Hill residents, we're going to continue to listen to them and try to work in the best that we can. Uh, but it will be the best that we can. It won't be the perfect solution for any particular individual, but it will be a good solution to the extent that it's the best we can do. And I can have those things ready and have that work done so that whenever the council makes a decision, if they approve that option, then we could move ahead with it rather quickly and be able to move ahead with the construction and get that going hopefully later this spring.
Couple of thoughts. One is that I think there need to be some revisions to the master street plan and especially the functional classification for some streets that are considered minor arterials right now, but do not actually serve that purpose. And for some alignment on proposed routing that was, is in the current Vision 2040 that probably are not very feasible and are not likely to happen. But I think that this kind of language that Mr. Von Tonglen has recommended would hold regardless of how we change the master street plan. I'm also aware that Metro Plan, our standards are based on the county cart. It's a, the standards for functional classification of streets. But what we've got in our subdivision regulations dates back to the seventies. And there's been several revisions to that by Metro Plan since then. And Metro Plan is currently has a consultant who is actually changing those requirements as we speak, and they should be out in the spring. So we need to be changing our master street plan to reflect that because that's been recommended to us. So, but I think that this is a short-term fix that probably would stay in any revisions we do. So if, if you're agreeable, I, I think what I'd like to see is for Richard and for Jim to put together some draft language. And for, if you don't mind, Mr. Cobb, to review it and make sure you're comfortable with it and Richard, that you're comfortable with it. And get it on the agenda next month for a public hearing. Are there any objections? Me.
Well, this is Dylan. Let, let me just ask a question here. Uh, I'm looking at Hemp Hill Road on Google Earth right now. Two blocks from all along, runs north and south. Just exactly what are we going to do to Hemp Hill Road?
We're going to make the connection on the north end to connect to Maryland. And as a 50-foot right-of-way, it would suggest, I mean, the 50-foot right-of-way would suggest that it's a local street, which would be 27 feet back a curb to back a curb. And that's going to create a problem with on-street parking. And the wider we go with the street, the more we get into folks' yards and eat up their current driveway. So if we go with a wider street to accommodate on-street parking, we've pretty well eliminated their ability to park in their driveway, which forces them to park on the street. Right now, it's in a, it's, it's finding that best width to accommodate everything we need. We did consider the number of sidewalks and pretty well, I think at this point, the single sidewalk design is, is going to be what we have to go with to just have one sidewalk. Uh, anything to do with bike lanes, we're mitigating the bike lane requirements in our current Vision 2040 recommendations. We're mitigating that to the new power line trail, which is underneath that large interjeep power line, which is one block east of Hemp Hill. We got a grant to pursue the trail. So that as a multi-use path would accommodate, you know, pedestrians, biking, et cetera. So we think we're accommodating everything we need in, for the neighborhood as well as for the circulation of traffic within the city. And again, we're just taking the open ditch. Currently, it's 18, 19 feet wide, edge of pavement to edge of pavement, and we're extending that. Putting in curb and gutter, getting rid of the open ditches. We're going to put in some larger drainage underneath the road to be sure that we have a water, you know, that's that, that we correctly designed that drainage. And that'll be pretty much the extent. The, the radius, as you come to each of those cross streets uh, will increase the radius, the turning radius to match current standard of 25-foot radius. So those
Basically. Uh, yesterday, my wife and I drove Maryland Avenue from highway 107 all the way to the end and then came in from the east side and drove Maryland Avenue to the end there. And my thought about connecting Hemp Hill Road to Maryland Avenue is, I don't think that's a plus. I, I think, I, I just don't think, I think that probably the people that live on Hemp Hill are happy where they are and I don't, I don't think it's going to improve anything. I don't think it's going to be a plus for the city. I think it's put a lot of traffic on, or any, any traffic on Hemp Hill. It's it's a long way down to Kiel or anywhere. I, I just don't think it's a good idea. But I guess that was written in the years ago. But anyway, that's, that's my comment on it.
My reaction to that.
What they ever figure out on building the bridge on Maryland.
Still in the hands.
Pick that up later. We need to stick to, from topic, Lucian.
Yeah.
And my reaction there is that this is going to be built, it's been the functional classification of collector for years, and it is a priority for the bond issue funds. The only question at this point is, how is it going to be built to the least problem for the neighborhood? Is that correct, Richard?
Yes, sir.
Well, the issue then again is to come up with draft language that would allow the city engineer to make appropriate revisions and modifications of standards in existing neighborhoods without doing special legislation for everyone that might come up in the future. And to be able to consider it at a public hearing next month. Are there any objections? Hearing none, move along.
Hearing, none, move along. The next item on the agenda needs to be the, the proposed donation of a park to the city.
This parcel of land, you can see it shown here on the screen, is located in Oakdale area. We have Miller Glen and, and Oakdale subdivisions there. This is on the north side of Oakdale. And then the top edge of this graphic is, as far as you can go before you get to another large power line easement through there and you get into Kellogg Creek. It's a low area and the idea is for this land to be excavated, we'll have to go through the Corps of Engineers, obviously, but excavate that to create a permanent water body, a lake, for recreation and enjoyment of the neighborhood, but also it would be accessible through a future trail coming up Kellogg Creek. And I don't know exactly where that'll be, but this is, you know, we have a, the bike and pedestrian plan that's being developed. We also have a new Parks Master Plan being developed. So this donation of land is simply to make it official that the city has, has the land and can move ahead with developing it into, you know, designing it to be a, a park with a, a water feature and then, you know, whatever else the park designers would, would come up with at the time. I, I want to bring emphasis on Vision 2040 and the comprehensive plan. And within that plan, it recognizes that all developments should come through the planning commission. Of course, many of them are for your approval, but some of them are simply to be acknowledged that you've seen it and you're aware that something is, is occurring and you're acknowledging that it does meet or match the intent of the mass, the comprehensive plan. So that's the reason I wanted you to see this. It's, it's informational, but it's also for you to have an opportunity to comment. And this will go to the city council, I believe, in a form of a resolution for them to accept the donation of land to the Parks Department.
Dennis, did you get the copy of, could you pull up the, the Vision 2040 Land Use Plan?
Yes, I can.
The reason I'm asking him to do this is that there is a, one of the land uses in the land use plan is recreation areas, and there is a recreation area designated in this general location, and I wanted you to see that. Hopefully.
You just talking about here?
I'm not seeing it.
Can you see it now?
No, sir. We're still seeing the drawing. There you go. You see the Miller Glen subdivision, you can see Miller Glen Drive, and then there's a large blue spot. And that was the intent of the developer.
It's between, between Miller's Glen and Oak Forest Circle.
Yeah.
And north of Oak Forest Lane, see that?
Mm-hmm.
So this looks like it's pretty close to what was anticipated in the plan.
Yes, it is.
So because it wasn't on the agenda for action, my recommendation is that, that we have a discussion about whether commissioners feel like it is appropriate for the city to accept this donation of land on the basis that it's consistent with the land use plan discussed.
What would be our objection to it?
I'll take that as a positive.
Well, I'm just asking some questions.
Oh, it's hard, it's hard to turn down a donation of land at any time, but the important part of this discussion is that we have a comprehensive plan, we have a map, spent a lot of time developing it, and of course, this is a living document. So we will be updating this Vision 2040 periodically. We'll be changing the map periodically. But when things align so that we have a plan and then we have something physical that comes along and addresses the plan, when those things line up, I think it's important to show that the plan is working. And furthermore, that if there's something that doesn't agree with the plan, that we have an opportunity, and we're in a sort of a habit, so to speak, of looking at this plan and making sure that we use it. And then when something comes along that doesn't agree, we will be in a position to catch that and have discussion about it.
Blake, do you have any comment?
No, I, I mean, it's a donation in, consistent with the plan. I don't see any reason not to accept it.
Mr. Bruno? Are you here?
I can't hear Steve.
Steve, you're on mute. Steve, you're on mute. There you go.
Still is.
There it is.
Now we go.
And I agree with everybody. I mean, it's real, almost totally consistent with the land use plan. It's looking good.
Lucian?
Sounds okay to me.
And let the record reflect that the commission is agreeable to this donation. Thank you. And finally, the year in review. I had some reason to look at the ordinance that created the planning commission. And while I had looked at it once before, I guess I hadn't really absorbed it and paid attention and would probably flunk a test on it. Because one of the things that requires the planning commission to do is submit a report on last year's activities to the city council every January. Does anybody remember the last time that happened? Not since I've been on board. So I thought, well, to myself, well, let me see what we did. And I decided the easiest way for me to start out with it was to go through the minutes of last year and come up with a, a matrix of all the things we've done and kind of give you a sense of where we've been spending our time. And I think it's really interesting, especially when you look at the number of preliminary plots that we looked at and the number of final plots that we looked at. The preliminary plots suggest that COVID slowed things down. The final plot suggested that we're on the tail end of stuff that's happened over the last year or two, which I just like is interesting. Only a couple of site plans, but fairly even distribution of the sorts of things we do. If you want a detailed list, I've, I've got a list also, I could send it to you, but for purposes of tonight, I just wanted to show you the distribution of work on, on our part. And I also added that the Board of Zoning Adjustment, I looked at that too, because it's part of the zoning code. And to me, it was very interesting that the Board only had three meetings and touched three things. Election of officers, request, remember that request to, on, to setback or to adjust setbacks on nine properties on a final plat, which was withdrawn because it became fairly obvious that we weren't going to approve it. And in September, a variance request to cover a carport that was rejected. And what I think is interesting is that basically only two applications to the Board of Adjustment this year, which is a major departure of years past. Mike?
Mr. Milton, one observation I'd like to make from your chart, and I shared this with, with someone this, this past week in another meeting. Look at your preliminary plat total and your final plat total. We're finaling out a lot of plots and those subdivisions are building out and we're running out of lots, buildable lots in Sherwood. So we need that preliminary plat activity to increase in 2021. And we're expecting that action to occur north of Kellogg Creek. So there's going to be a lot of work done in 2021, looking at the availability of sewer, sanitary sewer systems that are there and how they function and how they work together and how they provide for their sewer improvement district patrons, as well as how they provide for the citizens of Sherwood. And obviously, looking at the master street plan for where new roads are going to be. So get ready, I hope, for a lot of really significant activity in 2021 to, to now show up on the north side of Kellogg Creek.
And in a similar vein, looking at the coming year and what we might be doing, you notice that we had zoning code, seven zoning code revisions last year. And they tended to deal with isolated problems or clarifications or adding a minor adjustment to something. And we really haven't made any major overhauls of the zoning code. The last one we did was when we changed the requirements for the Board of Zoning Adjustment and completely revamped that. What we brought Mr. Van Tonglen on board was to take a good, hard look at the provisions of the zoning code, many of which are issues or problematic, and to link them up and to make them consistent with the plans, land use plan. But at the same time, based on my experience in the past, and I'm sure of Mr. Van Tong's, is that when you start looking at the details of the zoning plan, it starts making you question some of the provisions of the land use plan. So I would expect to see some revisions be made there. But I think we're starting to march headlong into the 21st century right now. Hopefully, it will be a busy and productive year. And finally, because Lucian, you had a question, and let's hear it.
He didn't have a question. Sorry, I had you muted.
That's right. No question.
Oh, okay. That concludes our business. Have a motion, do adjourn.
I move adjourn, Knight.
Second from Blake.
All roll.
Yes.
Gillum.
Yeah.
Knight.
Yes.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Now calling the January 12th, 2021 Sherwood Board of Zoning Adjustment to order.
Please call the roll.
Bruno.
Here.
Gillum.
Yeah.
Knight.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Middleton.
Here. Item three.
Approval of October 13th, 2020 minutes.
You received a copy. Are there any adjustments or corrections?
Motion to approve from Blake.
Second, aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda.
I don't have any other items to add. Does anybody else?
Those are.
The agenda is set.
Election of chairman.
Well, now floor is open for election of chairman. Nominate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Rob Milton.
Second.
Motion is second. Are there any other nominations? Nominations are closed. Call the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Middleton.
Stane.
Election of vice chairman.
I'd like to nominate Blake Martin, Steve.
Mike the second, that nomination. Knight.
Are there any other nominations? If the floor is closed, call the roll.
Bruno.
Aye.
Gillum.
Aye.
Knight.
Aye.
Martin.
I'm staying.
Middleton.
Aye.
Adoption of bylaws.
Do we have those? Part of my learning curve is that, once again, I decided to look at what's in the zoning code. And bless my heart, if I didn't say that the, the ordinance, Board of Zoning Adjustment is quite required to meet at least once a quarter. What we did last year was saying we're not going to meet every month, but we kind of neglected that we have to meet once a quarter. And I don't think at this point we want to change the ordinance on this, but I do think that we need to change our bylaws to reflect that we do have to meet once a quarter. And so the question is, how do we schedule it? And I spoke with the planning secretary and we think that the best idea is wait until the end of each quarter and then hold a meeting. If the only thing we do is to approve the agenda from the last meeting, so be it. But if there is another meeting that takes place during that quarter, that will satisfy the requirement for a meeting in the quarter. So that way, we either have a meeting that's called because there's an item to discuss or because it's in the bylaws. That's what this revision reflects.
Well, I don't know that June, September, and December are the right tentative dates because we're going to have to hold a meeting every January, no matter what, because the bylaws require the election of the officers in January. I don't know that we want a meeting in December and turn around and have to have one again in January.
Well, then we'd have to change the bylaws about when the election of officers occurred. And that's right now is set to January.
Exactly, right.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to have one in January, no matter what.
June, September. I guess the idea was that let's suppose we have a meeting in January and come March, which is the first month of the next quarter, there's an item of business. And so we hold a meeting in March. Does that, when, then the next meeting, do we, when do we hold it? And the default is the end of the quarter so we can see if any meetings were conducted to hold business in that quarter.
It's not that big of a deal because just like this meeting, even with the election of officers, what have we got, five minutes into it?
Yeah. I mean, they're, they're done in conjunction with the planning commission date, so.
Exactly.
I, I just didn't know if we wanted to spell out June, September, December, based on the fact that we have one that we have to conduct in January and then that potentially could be a. and then that potentially could be a long time from January to June if we didn't have any other business, based on what's in the highlighted text.
Well, the way it currently reads, it could be from January to January.
Well, could we have it on call of the chairman?
We could.
And just make sure we get, get three meetings in or four, whatever it is.
Well, it would be better, instead of relying on the, our memory, if the bylaws set a default time.
Okay.
What could always happen is that if we knew that, for instance, that the second Tuesday was gonna fall on a holiday that of September, June, September, or December, we could hold a special meeting to take care of it at the same time whenever we're holding the planning commission.
Right. Okay.
I'm gonna recommend it not be at the call of the, of the chairman. It needs to be, the, the language needs to appear in the bylaws in however fashion you guys agree.
Sir, an alternative suggestion?
No, I was, I was just pointing out the fact that knowing that we gotta have one in January and what was written says December, but I understand the, the thought behind that's the last month of each calendar quarter, so.
It's always possible, but let's suppose we did have a meeting in March. What would happen if we had to have a meeting in, let's see, that would be the end of March. So we had a meeting in March and then we also had to have one in April.
Yeah, it could happen.
Two in the same quarter.
Yeah. It's not like we convene on a different night than we do as the planning commission. I mean, it's one in the same evening, so. I'm, I'm fine. I was just pointing out the fact that we had to hold one in January by the bylaws and so. That might look like potentially gonna have a long gap, but.
Sort of pick your poison. One is gonna have two meetings back to back in December and January. Or a long stretch between meetings. Pick your poison.
Yes, you're right. Then I'm fine with it.
It's not as if the planning, it's not as if we meet for about forty-five minutes an hour on these. So I don't see what the problem is with back to back December and January.
I don't either. I was just making, I was just pointing it out to everybody. I'm fine with it. I'm fine with the language as it, as it's written, so.
Me too.
Likewise.
Can we have a motion?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Knight.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi. Have the motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second, Knight.
Bruno.
Hi.
Gillum.
Hi.
Knight.
Hi.
Martin.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi. See you next month, guys.
See you later. Thank you.
Have a good one.